Item number 16, proposed expansion of fire career staff and continuation of discussion. I'm just going to turn it over to Chief.
I'll start first. So just some new information. At your July 28 meeting, board consensus was to host in-person meetings to give residents a chance to learn about Chief Wegman's proposal, the reason for it, and the impact it could have on their township real estate taxes. Emails were sent to all the HOA points of contact that the township has for all the residential neighborhoods in the township. We've also continued to publicize the plan in our e-news and social media platforms. As of today, we've met with residents in Montgomery Walk and the Shammany Falls, both are 55-plus communities. No other HOA as of tonight has reached out and requested a meeting. This Thursday on August 28, Chief Wegman and I will be hosting an in-person town hall meeting here at the township building. The meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Tonight, I'm seeking board consensus as to whether you would like staff to obtain costs for a fire services study, as this has been suggested by Ms. Bamford at a past meeting. I've reached out to one firm, and their communication is in your packet. They have a lot of information that they need from us, obviously. I've identified a second firm, and I reached out to them, and a third firm in Washington DC that's affiliated with ICMA, and I've emailed them for information. However, we don't want to keep moving forward in this direction if we don't have board consensus or the majority of the board that you wish to take this approach. Obviously, there's going to be a cost, and we have money in our budget this year for consultants fees, and we have not done some of our projects, so we would be able to start it this year. But it's also going to involve staff contributions in terms of interviews, in terms of producing documents, and then a determination from them of how long it would take. So I wanted to take this night to get board consensus one way or the other, and also to answer any additional questions or concerns that you have regarding the process. We're just looking for direction. We will do whatever the board directs at this point. I know at least at one of the HOA meetings, we were asked about phasing. Chief Wegman told the audience there why he didn't believe phasing would work. We did explain that we have a collective bargaining agreement in place, and the union has indicated they would not reopen it for anything other than 24/72, which is work 24 hours, have 72 hours off. However, if the board wishes to move forward with a phasing plan, then we will shift gears and make plans for that. If they wish us to pause that and do the study in its place, and then come back and have the consultant come in and report to you on that, we can do that as well. Obviously, we'll get three quotes. We'll get the scope of work outlined, make sure it's apples to apples, bring it to the board if that's your desire. And then you would have the opportunity to interview the three firms if you wish, or to take staff's recommendations as to which firm to use. But we just need some direction tonight so we know what we should be doing, and pausing on one thing and moving on another, or simultaneously moving in both, but we just need the direction.
I'll start. I'll just say that I have full faith in our chief. He is more than our chief. He lives here. He's a resident. I completely agree with his plan, and I personally do not see the reason to pay a consultant to give us information when he is here. He knows what we have. He knows what we need. His heart is here because he is the resident. I'm not going to vote to pay for anyone else to try to come into our township and tell us what we need.
So I have tremendous respect for Chief and all of our career and volunteer firefighters. But the scale and the magnitude of this change is something that warrants us to take a very hard look at all of the expenses associated with it. And right now, I feel that there are a lot of unanswered questions in this. Right now, all we have is a proposed tax increase that will cover the cost of the salaries and the benefits, and none of the other expenses that are going to come along with this change. So I feel as if we need to do a little more analysis and forecasting on the expenses that are associated with this, including facilities, including other material costs for equipment, for other resources that are associated with it in terms of support staff and administration. And I think that, given the scale and the magnitude of this, we would be remiss not to bring in some unbiased, impartial, objective third parties to review the good work that the chief has done on this. This is not to say that, they may not conclude that, you know, moving all at once to the 24/7 is the best possible approach here. But, you know, they may have some experience that the chief doesn't have, and they may be able to do a better job of forecasting these expenses so that we can communicate with complete transparency to our constituents, to all of our taxpayers, about the need for this and what exactly it's going to cost us, not just in year one, but two through 10. And those costs have not been calculated, and I think it would be irresponsible of us to move forward without some additional resources assigned to this, especially the resources that can be put together by an independent consultant who has more experience with this scale of a staffing increase.
I'm in full support and in agreement that we need to have a significant change. The issue is the pace of which we make that change, and also the input in information and what are the consequences of these changes. So this is a big ask for our taxpayers to foot the bill for something big like this. I'm not saying that we won't ask for that eventually, or maybe even initially, but I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to make sure that unanticipated costs, taking best practices from other areas and laying them on to what may benefit us and our taxpayers, and to ensure that we have a safe community primarily, but that we're being responsible with how we're putting this out. Having a third party take a look at those things, to me, is money well spent, and it's time well spent. Hopefully, we can very efficiently put that in place so that we can very quickly have answers for this and make this even a better plan for the safety of our community.
So my thought around it, coming from a corporate world, when I was in the corporate world, we often had unrelated third parties come in, and they have a ton of information that they need to gather from you because they don't know the work. They don't know all that they need to know to get something, to come up with what the proposal needs to look like for your particular area. And one of the things that, honestly, just to be very transparent and honest, that I used to struggle with as a leader in a corporation, was that I had to rely on these people to tell upper management what me, doing the work every day, my team, doing the work every day, already know, and sharing with them, you know, sharing with upper management, here's what we need. And it's not something that we just come up with in a couple of weeks. It's something that I myself have had to do, the data gathering, with my team so that we can present on what we need for our world. And so Chief has shared with us on more than one occasion now that this didn't just happen yesterday. This has been three, four, or five years, I think, in the making, and it's now at a point where it's so critical that he's bubbled it up to us, or first to Carolyn, and then now to us, and that something has to be done. Okay, we heard everything that night long, that we were here for two plus hours, two hours and 12 minutes, to be exact, on this topic, and we all walked away knowing something has to happen. I think we all agree, something has to happen. The question now becomes, what is it, and how do we do it? I have, I'm going to say, I might echo Candace in this piece of it. I have now less questions and more answers. You and I spoke one-on-one, and I said to you, and you said that to me, I have a lot of questions. I'm like, I do too. And fast forward, that was now weeks ago, probably a couple months ago, and I now have more answers than I have questions. Do we know what this whole picture is going to look like? And I can tell you now, a third party is not even going to be able to share the whole picture. There's going to be things that they may leave out because we didn't give them enough data to create their plan. So I feel comfortable and confident in our chief, in our team, that we can move forward in this. So that's where I'm at.
I think to echo on Audrey a little bit with the experience in the office, even something as simple as a copier, we all know, we knew what we needed. We asked for color. We asked for duplicator. We asked for this and that. And then somebody else came in and said, well, we think this. We think that. The people using the system, the people doing the work, are the ones who really know what you need. I have complete faith in the chief. I think he's thought long and hard about this. Taxes go up. His taxes go up as well.
Our taxes go up.
Our taxes go up. The couple of town halls that have happened at the different HOAs, the consensus seems to be the taxes that get raised are necessary because if there is an emergency at your home, what dollar figure do you put to that? You don't. There's just none. So I would not vote for a third party coming in. I would vote for moving ahead, as Chief has explained to us in the past. And like you, Audrey, I have more answers now than I have questions. So thank you for that, Chief.
We have an answer about what the tax increase is going to be in 2027 to pay for this. Do you have a tax increase answer for 2028 or 2029? Because this is the tip of the iceberg, is a 1.4 mil tax increase because the costs have not been calculated for our facilities and for some of the other expenses related to this. So we are not operating with all of the information here in moving forward on this initiative. We don't have those numbers.
One of the things, and I'm just going by when we've had, you know, consultants come in, and I'm even going to just talk about my HOA. We had a consultant come in and tell us, you know, in 10 years from now, you need to get your roofs done, or you need to get this done. The price they quoted at the time they did the analysis is far different than when we get to that point. To your point, Tanya, we have to have an understanding, is it going to stay at this amount? No, I foresee somewhere down the line for various reasons, our taxes may go up.
But we already know that there's facilities that are going to need to be created to house these additional staff. We're talking about 19 additional people.
Not working at the same time.
But a building committee is already meeting with firms to do a facility study to address the facility's needs that will have to be met at some future date. And so while it may not be a number that we have in hand, we can give a ballpark estimate and then project and use that for forecasting purposes. And again, this is information that, for the sake of transparency, for the benefit of our residents and taxpayers, we ought to be including in our calculations and saying that we think estimates for tax increases on an annual basis are going to be this. But right now, we're not positioning it that way. We're not operating with full transparency. And the township website doesn't even acknowledge that facilities are definitely something that we are going to have to address. And yet, we have a building committee that's been meeting with consultants already, and the plan is to include the cost for a facility study in the 2026 budget. So, you know, I don't feel as if we are approaching this with the visibility into what the likely costs are and what that's going to mean in terms of tax increases for our constituents. And that's why I think it makes all the sense in the world to bring in a third-party independent consultant at this juncture to make sure that we are not only covering all of those bases, but communicating around them effectively as well. And those are things that are really important. And again, you know, they might reach the same conclusion, and I'm not opposed to it if we have someone to come and do some oversight and do some review of all of the assumptions, and also do a more thorough job of the analysis on that cost.
We have a paid police department that keeps us safe. We are at the juncture of time in the world where no one volunteers. We need a paid fire department. We raise taxes as we need to. We collect funds as we need to for the police department. I believe we have to treat the fire department the same way.
But we're fiduciaries in this township. This is our job to ask these questions and for staff to answer them. That's just the role of a supervisor. That's why they call us supervisors. We ask these questions so that we can share this information with our constituents. They know we did our due diligence and asked all the hard questions. Staffing assumptions that were made in this proposal have, you know, six firefighters per, what is it? Are we calling platoons? So, you know, that's an assumption that no one has challenged to date, but an independent consultant could come in and look at, well, you know what? That's more than typical. And, you know, maybe challenge an assumption. You could probably do with fewer per shift. And that's, you know, something like, you look at Upper Marion, and, you know, they have a full-time 24/7 department, but they have a total of 19 for a larger municipality. So, you know, why do we need more here in Montgomery Township for a smaller municipality than a larger municipality has? It's not a question I can answer. I would like an independent consultant to come in and evaluate that and give us an opinion. And, you know, we're not getting that kind of information. So I think it's our responsibility to explore this further and do a more thorough job of evaluating our assumptions and all of our options before we proceed.
It seems to me that Bill has made three of us very comfortable moving ahead.
Well, before we say that, I want to first see if there's any comment from, if Chief would like to say anything, if Carolyn would like to say anything, and then first and foremost, though, are residents. Anyone here would like to come up and address and ask questions, comments, concerns? Because, you know, this is still got it up in the air. So if anyone would like to come forward, please state your name. Oh, I don't know if he is, or not. He just probably wants to hear from us first. Yeah, let's hear the public first. Your name.
Hi, Eric Pelletier from 103 Pemberton Court, Autumn Grove Development. First, I want to say that I fully support the goal of ensuring that this community has timely, effective fire protection.
I'm sorry, Eric, say that again.
I fully support that township needs fire protection and safety. The men and women who serve our fire department deserve those resources, and residents deserve the confidence that our response times will protect lives and property. My concern right now is not with the goal, but with the process. The expansion being proposed will require significant tax increases, and I think it's being advanced without benefit of an independent, comprehensive study of all possible options and potential needs. Before the township commits to such a major investment, I think it's important to know if it's the most effective and efficient way forward. In your packet tonight and what was available to the public is the correspondence that was provided to the township that outlines what I think such a study should include. A baseline assessment of the current system from an independent person. I mean, I agree Chief Wegman's doing a great job, but he knows the system and he's proud of it. Sometimes the things we don't know we need aren't uncovered unless someone else looks at it from the outside. This happens in my field all the time. We always have to do accreditation services. Someone looks at what we're doing and tells us, we think we're doing a great job. Well, you may not be doing such a great job. You could do this. So that could come up in such a study. Maybe an evaluation of different service models that could be considered, and maybe the one that's being proposed is. I don't know that you know that. Planning for recruitment, planning for equipment. Even just tonight, you have to replace a $5,000 piece of equipment on the building. What else could be coming up? We don't know that. And then looking at a long-term financial plan with a risk analysis. I don't think that's part of any of the information that I read or see, and no one would know that. But someone who has expertise in that area as part of that consulting team might. In my view, it should also assess the fire department's facilities where it is today. I've been at some meetings over the course of the year, and there's been some differing viewpoints. The chief says that we have plenty of facilities. One of the volunteers says we don't, not to cover that. And I don't know who's right. I don't know. Without this type of analysis, I think township risks pursuing an expensive expansion plan without the full confidence that it truly solves the underlying problem. An independent review would give both the board and residents objective data, transparency, and assurance that whatever path is chosen is best for our safety and fiscal health. Additionally, there needs to be a concerted effort to inform residents. I have talked to at least 10 of my neighbors. Nobody has a clue that this is even being considered.
So are you sharing with them when they said that too?
I am.
Okay. Because I mean, part of it is us.
I'm sharing with them where the information is available. And yes, using a website and other means, and social media, but there are a lot of people today that are not on social media. They're avoiding social media. They're not going to the website, and they are unaware that this is being considered. How much does it cost to send a mailing to all residents to inform them of the town hall that's on Thursday night? So I'm trying to do that, but I'm one resident. We have 26,000 residents.
Yeah, but I mean, it starts with all of us too. I mean, to your point.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
I'm willing to walk around, talk to my neighbors, but I'm an informed resident. There aren't that many of us, unfortunately. Wish there were more. So my question is simple. I think pausing, and there's obviously money. The township manager just said there's money to put in place a commission and look at this. I would look at it. And that's my view. And I want to thank everyone up there for your service to the township. Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Mersky, 794 Hickory Lane, Woodbrook, I'm sorry, in the Shammany Falls, formerly of 21 Glen Road in Woodbrook. I've lived in the township for 48 years, and I have to say it is a wonderful place to live and to raise a family. Generally speaking, I am not in opposition to acquiring additional fire services. I'm mindful of the expenditure that the residents are going to have to make. However, I do oppose the current proposal going forward without an independent consulting firm. And I know the chief spoke to us at our HOA about Upper Marion going full-time, and I know that they did bring in an outside consulting firm. So I'm calling for an independent firm to do a staffing study and also to assess future needs. And I think, as Tanya said, I would like to know projected costs for year two, three, four, five. So right now, this just takes care of what ostensibly would be next year, but we don't know anything after that. And I have to echo what Eric has said. I've been back to Woodbrook to talk to some people, and the majority of the people with whom I've spoken do not know about this.
Thank you, Debbie.
Is there anyone else? Here we go.
Hi, Rachel Brick, 708 Church Street. I'm a member of the fire department. I've been here since 2012. I'm currently serving on your retention and recruitment committee, trying to bring new members in because out of the 26,000 residents, we have a handful that are providing this fire protection for you for free every single day. I am your post-18 Explorer Program manager. I'm trying to recruit young men and women who are in their teens, who are interested in the fire service, to get involved in their community and start volunteering. I am one of your lieutenants who is scrambling multiple nights a week to provide coverage for Montgomery Township. I am your health and safety officer who lays awake at night wondering when someone is going to get hurt. I understand we need to be fiscally responsible. Of course, we need to be. Chief Wegman has laid out a great plan, a solid plan forward. And what I think some people are missing is the level of urgency. When I tell you our trucks are understaffed, we are routinely running with three people on a truck. So those 11 minutes that you people have heard a lot about, that's not saying that you're getting adequate people there even in those 11 minutes. I have been on so many calls where I'm the only pack-qualified individual on that truck. You know what I can do when I get to your house? Not a lot by myself. I need a team. I need a group of people that are there to work together. Now, recently, we lost another one of our drivers, and I am lucky if I can actually get a truck on the road. I am arriving to calls with our fire police because that's who can get me to the call, and I'm hoping that there's another truck coming from the other end for us to get there. I am begging you to please consider the health and safety of all of the members of this township because that is your responsibility. We're out of time. If we brought on 30 new people tomorrow to volunteer, we do not have time to get them trained adequately to fight the fires in your home, to cut you out of your vehicle if there's a horrible accident. We need your help, and I am really just, I'm asking you to really move forward with this with a sense of urgency that I fear may be lacking. Thank you.
Thank you.
So good evening. My name is Vinay Sari. I live in 2005 Jefferson Court, located in Woodhollow. I'm also a deputy chief of the fire department, one of the volunteers. I totally agree with Rachel and everything she's said with the sense of urgency. The numbers we have seen in recent years, recent months even, the number of decline we have, you know, it's really, it's troublesome, you know? And it's, we need to act on a change now versus later. I know under different regimes, we've had other studies done as well, but they basically come back and say the same thing that we were saying in years prior. We did one for the latter years ago, and literally said the same exact thing that we have been saying, what we needed. And we paid all the money for someone to say that same thing. I'm drained. I've been a volunteer here since 2005. I'm completely drained. I just got a new job. I'll be doing shift work. My availability will be changing. And I still have to get three, four, or five nights a week, you know? Just started today, but I have five meetings this week to go to, you know? We have people wearing multiple hats. Lieutenant Brick, you heard her say she's a health and safety officer. She's a lieutenant. She's on the recruitment retention committee. She works with the explorers. We have people wearing multiple hats, and they are all burnt out. My fear of only hiring a small number of people versus the full 19 is that they will be burnt out soon too, and they will leave. Then we're starting from scratch again. The safety of the residents is number one, you know? Like Rachel said, sometimes I'm not even sure if we can get a truck out, you know? Or if the truck comes, it has minimal staffing. I can't really do much with a minimal staffing crew that arrives on scene. So I would urge that this would be a sense of urgency to move forward. So I would urge that this would be a sense of urgency um to move for, to move forward. With our chief workman's up up our proposal. Um, everything that he's said is the truth and it's. It's what we've seen, you know, eh, it is. The time for changes now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Venei.
Anyone else? Any other comments, questions from the board?
If I could give you an update on where we're at in terms of viewing the, so we have a dedicated webpage with the fire. It's on the homepage of the website. There's a button. Um, as of this afternoon, Derek told me, um, we've had twenty-seven hundred and ninety-nine views of that page. The podcast that Chief Wigman and I did has been listened to six hundred and ninety times. The portions of the board of supervisors meetings that we snipped and then put on the website. Your June twenty-third meeting that Audrey referenced earlier, the two hour and twenty-one minute discussion, sixteen hundred and twenty-two views. And then your July twenty-eighth meeting was two hundred and seventeen views.
Um, other, I know we have our meeting on Thursday. Was there any plan for any other? Reach it, you know, other township meetings that we were going to plan to do?
We hadn't planned any beyond that one. We did put handouts at the CRC because it gets a lot of foot traffic, so we have flyers there on the counter. Some people are coming in and scanning their card. They see that the town hall and the reason we had it here and not the CRC is because. The ability for um our IT department to be able to livestream it and then have it recorded for YouTube so that people who don't. Come or maybe don't hear about it, but then hear about it over the Labor Day weekend will have the opportunity to still watch it.
Think I saw some digital displays with information as well. Is there something out?
Yes, there was, um, I believe at Horsham and the Parkway, there's this digital sign and then our three digital signs. Um, that are at our facilities, um Battalion Two, the rec center and here reference it as well.
Thank you.
For the record, I spoke with the consultant whose uh information is in the board packet. And the turnaround time on a study was estimated as two to three months, which would still work within this budget cycle. And having that extra set of eyes, and it's not just one set of eyes, mind you, it's a team of people that we bring in to provide that. Additional expertise around this transition and given the scale of this transition. And given the fact that we can get it done in time for this budget cycle and just to have that reassurance. And we have the money in the budget to do it. For for something of this magnitude warrants having that additional, you know, availing ourselves of that additional resource. Provide the reassurance around the, you know, the. The soundness of this path forward. And again, this isn't about, you know, advocating for a phased approach over the, you know, all at once. This is, this is just about making sure that we have all of our ducks in the row. And why not invest a little bit, just a fraction of what we have to raise taxes uh to generate. The millions and millions and millions of dollars that we're going to need to fund this initiative. It's worth that investment. We will get the return on on our investment in having a third party come in and and do some. Some work with our team to make sure that everything is, uh, everything is projected and communicated appropriately.
Can I ask, um, what would the impact be if we? If if it was to wait to, let's just say, two to three months, what would happen? I mean, I know that I hear loud and clear. This is a massive urgency. So two to three months. How is that, is that a deal breaker? And we only heard about this two or three months ago, so that's what I'm. I I'm, you know, it's, I feel like we're being rushed to a answer questions and understand the whole such situation. Um, and I want to make sure. You know. What are the impacts if we were to wait? On on the schedule and I know, I know things have even gotten worse since two days ago, so in terms of scheduling.
So, so if the board moved in that direction, then tomorrow I would reach out to the other two firms as well as the first firm. Shore up what we want to see so they all have the same information and then get quotes from them and then it would have to go on your agenda. For your first meeting in September to approve it, to pick the firm that you want to do the work and then approve it. And then we would, the next day, we would notify them that they've been chosen and start the work.
For professional services though, can't we appoint and then ratify? At a, at a meeting, so could the board in, you know, authorize you to uh appoint a firm up to a certain amount? And um and ratify a contract later so it wouldn't delay anything?
That's a solicitor. I mean, in my opinion, yes, but that's a solicitor question that.
Yes, in in emergency situations, that's done in other townships and and boroughs and municipalities. Obviously, this is not the preferred way, but it can happen and I do believe it's legal.
Do we have any idea on cost from these firms or we have no idea? We we have to give them. A lot of information.
But if you lim, if you limit the scope, it'll keep the cost down. The more, the more we, you know, say, well, we want you to look at this and this and this and this, you know, more we add on to it. But if we keep that scope tight, it's to focus on the areas where we feel like we need the, you know, more support. Then, you know, that's something that would be less expensive and and or time consuming to produce.
But then that's also three to four to five to six months where our people are still exhausted, burned out, feeling that they are.
Two to three months to complete.
Correct, but then once that study is completed, all the other things have to happen. We have to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you. It's just more time that the staff that we have are exhausted, burned out. And the truck is getting to my house that could be on fire, understaffed. In close to eleven minutes instead of five minutes. I don't know a person who's going to say they would rather have eleven minutes than five.
To clarify, it would happen in twenty twenty-five in time for the budget cycle, which would not delay the implementation of this plan.
And and that's my question to Carolyn. How does this impact the budget then? Because we typically start budgeting like next month, budget season starts in-house.
So the biggest part of the budget for us is um the capital, which we're working on now. Our operations are pretty standard. You know that we're not, we don't, we're not um creating any new departments. We don't have, you know, we're not suddenly developing a library or anything like that. The budget process can go smooth. The budget would get. The plan was to have a budget workshop with the board the end of October, like we did last year and the prior year because it was very well received by the board. And then the first meeting in November, which I don't know the date, is when you would have the budget formally presented to you. You would authorize it for advertisement. It has to sit for twenty days. Um, we posted on our website, um, used to just be available for public inspection, but the website makes that very simple for us. And then you would have to adopt a balanced budget with the corresponding tax um revenue before December thirty-first. We're required to do that by law.
So so none of this could be. So none of this could be implemented ahead of that, even if, even if we didn't do the study, we're still on that same timeline.
Say that again, Beth. I'm sorry. Say that to me again.
So if we don't do this, we're still, we're still on the same time, that that timeline because of the budget cycle.
Right.
It's not like we're going to get anything.
I have to follow the budget cycle that's um mandated for municipalities, regardless of whether this was an issue or not. I would have to make sure that we have a balanced budget in place by close of business on twelve thirty-one.
But we're looking for relief, like I I want to see things fixed. It won't be fixed any sooner if we have an answer tonight or tomorrow.
Right, it's not about fixing it sooner. It's about whether or not chief needs to know whether, and Carolyn, whether we're including. These dollars in on this budget cycle. That I think is the, um, you know, if the study shows something, you know, totally different than what chief is saying should be. And now it slows us down, then we may say, okay, we don't want to look at this right. We need to spend more time with it and might carry into now. For twenty-seven versus twenty-six. Um, I I think that, um, so I still feel that. Chief needs to, you know, and Carolyn, whoever, needs to move forward with um preparing the budget. With the thought that we are bringing these new hires on. So that's chief just doing the work. So that it gets presented to us and we approve it or not approve it come October, our meeting. I am not, the more we talk about it and hear about it, I honestly, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not a big. Fan of third-party um firms coming in and again, they're they're going to give us information based on what we tell them. Um, and show with that, show, show them that things are, you know, broken. It's broken right now. Um. But if they're, and I I I feel like I can't answer it because I want, I want to know how much is it going to cost, you know? Fifty thousand dollars, do I think that's worth a hundred thousand? Do I think that? I don't know. I don't know if it is. No, I, if they're going to show me something that chief hasn't already showed us or answered for us, then, you know, that's a part of it that just, I I just. I struggle with.
I'm not sure that the consultant, my husband's consultant in pharm- pharmaceuticals. They don't necessarily come into the company and just assess what they're doing. They actually bring in ideas from other companies. And say best practices, let's benchmark what is, what's working in other areas and implement the best practices that we may not be aware of. Because some other areas may be doing it. So, and again, these are people that aren't like, oh, we do financial and pharmaceutical consulting. These are people that, this is their expertise. So we're bringing in experts to help us do a better job. Of of assessing what the wor, what options might be be there. This might be a better situation to solve problems. I'm not saying that we don't have a good s- solution here, but also forecasting what other um un- unexpected. Consequences from this might be for HR, equipment, facilities, so many other things. At at very least, I would ask that we have some sort of forecast about how, what are the. Obviously, we think that there may be a facility need. So can we at least put that on paper? I want to be, I want to make sure we're being transparent about what these. Needs may be and what the consequences of those needs will be in addition to what we're asking for this year. That's only fair to say because if we're buying into this. Um, and and we need to, there's no, I don't think anyone here thinks that we don't need to have something. The issue is what's for the best and what are the best practices out there? We don't know what we don't know. That's all I'm saying. And that's why consultants have have jobs, because they actually do bring value. Anyone I've ever asked about what they do, they bring value. They have an ROI. They make things better, they make things more efficient and they make things run smoothly. And that's what I want for our, our fire department, our volunteers and for our community. So. That's my spiel.
So can we take a two-pronged approach? Can we move forward with um? Um, getting the information from the uh consultants, meaning, you know, giving them whatever information. And moving forward with that, but chief still moving forward with budgeting as if we're going in that direction. We're going in the direction of bringing on um the new hires. You know, the beginning of next year and so forth, but we still have the uh, the information from the. And and we need that information this year.
Right.
This year. Um. So that by the time we sit down in, you know, before the end of the year, we have that information to look at and. You know, we have, we still, we have to still approve the budget. At the end of the day, the budget's not approved yet.
Right.
We have to approve when we get in our meeting and sit there and and talk about it. Yeah, so that, that's a question. That's a question. Carolyn or whoever, is that a question?
We can do whatever the board consensus is. Seriously, we can. I mean, we can, I've worked in a community where I had three budgets one year because.
Yeah, I I don't.
No, I'm just saying, but it, if you're telling us if the majority of the board is saying. As far as budget preparations, move forward with the assumption that this is going forward, we can do that and put that together. If you're saying also at the same time, reach out to those consultants and, you know, narrow the scope of what you're looking for. And get a quote for them and then come back to the board or respond to the board, you know, offline so that you each know what that cost is. And get to respond to me individually. I can do that as well.
Yes, so that's where I'm at. I I want chief to move forward that, you know, this is the direction we're going, so continue with budget as as it. This is me, my thoughts. Um, but also um look into the um, the cost from the firms and then, you know, either reach out to us individually. Or like um our solicitor mentioned that we can give you the um, you know, the authority to to just make a decision for us. That's me.
I concur.
I'm, I'm good with that. I would, I would grant them the authority to appoint someone so that this can be done expeditiously.
Yeah. Absolutely.
We need to know how much it's going to cost first.
So could I get a motion to have me investigate it, report back to the board? And then if it's meets the parameters of the board for costs, I'm authorized to go forward and execute an agreement with the firm that I choose.
I would expect a cost as well as a timeframe. Yeah.
So if we have a scope of work that they're each. Looking to do along with their cost estimate. I think that's what we need going forward and then give you the authority to move forward with. The best company, the best price. Whatever kind of flushes out at that point. But with the understanding that we are moving as if it's, this increase is coming because we are moving towards the chief's plan.
Absolutely. Yep. Right, because I think one of the other, and I, all right, let me make the motion, make the motion for us to um allow Carolyn to. Um, make the decision based on what's presented from the three firms, I think you said. Um, and then share with us, we're okay for you to make a decision on. Am I saying it right?
I think we need Carolyn to go ahead and ask the firms to send their proposals over with the scope of work and the cost. And we will decide after that.
And the timeframe.
And a timeframe.
Time is of the essence.
Correct. And then with the recommendation to you as well. You want a recommendation so that we can move on this before your next meeting, which I believe is September eighth.
And we'll respond to you individually if we need to. That's the motion, right.
As a ratification. Okay.
That's the motion.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just uh now that we put that one to bed, is there anything that we can do? Um, funding that we can provide the fire department to to help. Address this, you know, the staffing shortfall that we're experiencing currently.
Currently, we give them money every year instead of a little bit tax credit because we went through this. The tax credit was not working equitably. Firefighters who were retired from their job but were still volunteering, they couldn't get an earned income tax credit. Young firefighters who were still living at home or renting, didn't get a property tax credit. So you came up with five hundred dollars a year for them. The stipend shift has, was, I think, fifteen dollars shift and now it's. Fifty, but the problem is you can't put a price on people's time is what we're finding, just like we're finding. People don't take overtime shifts the way they used to. The same thing's happening here, so I don't think we can buy our way out of it. What we've been able to do, like from a career perspective, is make sure that our department is situated that people, when we do hire, will want to come here. Not just because of the culture, but because they get adequately compensated for the shifts that they're putting in. I, we've looked at it. I just don't know that there's anything else we can do. Well, one of the things the volunteers said to Bill was they were hoping the stipends would go away if this moved forward. They would like, thank goodness, because it's a lot wanting to say be there at the station and.
It's a, it's a short-term gap measure, um, you know, I I and I understand, you know, um, maybe. Fifty dollars hasn't, you know. Moved the needle per se, but if we were to offer a hundred, if we were to offer two hundred. You know, if, you know, is, is this something that we can in the short term to address this, you know, would more people? You know, express an interest if we, if we paid more generously in the short term to cover us. While we're working through this transition plan.
Rachel is shaking her head. Rachel or Venei? Be honest.
I, chief was about to answer.
Sorry.
We have a federal grant uh where we pay for call and pay for training.
Um, Venei and I are meeting this week to talk about options for stipend. One of them is increasing allotment due to the fact that we just lost our top responder and driver. Um, I don't know how we're going to fill that gap, but I, I don't think he'll be back soon. Um, and we are always looking at ways. I mean, I've been asking the school district for two years to help me with a tax that'll benefit every volunteer firefighter in the district. And here we are still waiting. So, I, I am not opposed to anything to help. Uh, the issue is, is that people are tired of being at the firehouse. And when you're running nine hundred calls a year or a hundred calls a month, uh, for your volunteer organization, um, it's a lot to put on people. You mean, you heard Venei say it, he's doing five shifts a week as a volunteer. But we can certainly explore those options. And we just have to weigh that in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. Um, because, you know, uh, with the amazed decision and the fact that we have a career union fire department, we have to weigh those options as well so that we don't, um, necessarily, uh, anticipate agreements. Um, but, uh, we, I'm, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions because, uh, we've tried it all, so.
Well, I think the board is here to support you in that. So, uh, if you have a recommendation you want to come back to the board with, uh, we're, we're all ears.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to, um, move forward with what we made a motion on and then also.
Can we just, just for, because Deb doesn't always hear, was it a five oh for the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I heard a nay.
Oh, was there a nay?
Yeah, Candace said nay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. And I also want to clarify, if we come back with three quotes that are a hundred thousand dollars each and we're all like, no, we're not spending that, we have the right to refuse all three of them.
Thank you. Unless I have consensus from the majority, I will not move forward.
Right. And then the second piece of that, because you, uh, I think last meeting, the question was asked, um, that you get understanding from the majority that Chief just continues to move forward with this orig- you know, with the plan at budgeting as if we're moving in that direction. So I'm saying yes. Like, I want Chief to continue to move in the direction of, um, you know, bringing on the new team, the staff, and that, that's what's going to be presented at budget time. I think, Carolyn, am I right? You were looking for that when we, last meeting, I talked about, you just needed that clar- clarity.
Yes, I was. I was looking for that. I mean, not necessarily type, but I was definitely looking for.
You said you needed it by September. I'm, I'm here to say that I'm, I'm, and, you know, I don't know if anybody else here is willing to, um, you know, just kind of put that out there just so that he's working towards something. He needs to, you know, work on his budget. And I'm, I'm good to work towards in that direction.
So am I.
I am as well.
I want to see an analysis, side-by-side comparison with a phased rollout next to the, the twenty-four seven. I think it's worth running those numbers in an unbiased way. So, I'm not saying I'm opposed to the, uh, all at once, but I, I feel like it's our, part of our due diligence to, to run those numbers. And I haven't seen those yet.
Run the numbers on, I'm sorry, time.
Yeah, um, the website was updated with a, um, a staffing model for a phased approach. But what we don't have is what the related cost, uh, I'm sorry, uh, tax increase would be to, to sustain that staffing. Um, or like, you know, what the, um, yeah, and what, so what the tax increase would be, the mileage increase would be to, to sustain that. I have to look at the, at the website again, but, um, it's, it's not, it's not like an apples-to-apples side-by-side comparison right now. It's just, um, you know, the, the nineteen.
We can present it differently. It's in two different places on that page, but we can, we, I can work with Derek to get it side-by-side, even if it's an Excel spreadsheet. I know there was a question about, um, phasing it. And if we phased it, why would we still use the twenty-four seventy-two model? And Chief Wigman is, um, can speak to, when we're currently, uh, ten for, for ten-hour days. And, um, the union has indicated they would reopen the contract for twenty-four seventy-two. Uh, we do need to reopen it if we're going to change the work hours or we'll have an unfair labor practice filed against the township.
That's helpful. Um, and I just felt like there should also be, you know, if we're going to try to be neutral in the presentation of the information, which we're not being currently, uh, we could, we could still outline what the pros and cons would be for each scenario. Um, you know, but that it should be presented in, you know, in an unbiased fashion.
Okay. Anything else? All right, um, item number seventeen, new business department reports.